Is there land use or anything that we'll use this tonight? It really shouldn't be too bad.
I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, December 2nd, 2019. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Reverend Claiborne Jones from St. Benedict Episcopal Church at 2160 Cooper Lake Road, who will come forward at this time, give our invocation, and also lead us in the pledge of flag. Say, "Everyone, please rise."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Holy One, we ask your blessing on those gathered here to offer leadership to all who live and work in Smyrna. May each of them be eager to listen, willing to understand, and glad to respect one another with mutual support, help and to serve all people in our city, caring alike for young and old, strong and weak, rich and poor, friend and stranger. Inspire them with your wisdom, and by your grace, may all their works reflect your righteous and empowering love. All this we ask in your holy name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that maybe are not familiar with St. Benedict's, they're on Cooper Lake Road, and I'm sure they'd love to have you visit or join their congregations. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. We're open all the time to anybody.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Item two is agenda changes, and we do not have any. Item three, under the mayor's report, 2019-432 is a proclamation in recognition and honor of Reverend John Calvin Hurst, who Councilmember Marilyn Blackburn has that one, and she will read that. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, it is on. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. We lost a very dear citizen about two weeks ago, Reverend Hurst, John C. Hurst. And he was very instrumental in a lot of lives in the Rose Garden area. And so, tonight, I would like to honor his legacy by reading a proclamation and sharing this with his family who's here with us tonight. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition and honor of Reverend John Calvin Hurst. Whereas Reverend John Calvin Hurst was born May 30th, 1930, in Cross Hill, South Carolina, received his early education at Brewer High School in Greenwood, South Carolina, and married Mary Alice on November 27th, 1951. Reverend Hurst and Mary Alice celebrated 60 years of marriage and have two children, Mary Cora and Johnny Murray. And whereas Reverend John Calvin Hurst made Smyrna, Georgia, his home in September of 1969, he became a member of the historic Mount Zion First Baptist Church, where he was ordained as a minister, and in 1983, became the pastor of Mount Zion First Baptist Church, the oldest African-American church in Smyrna, Georgia, celebrating 145 years. And whereas Reverend John Calvin Hurst attended Theological Seminary School, where he received his associate degree in Old Testament Scripture during his pastoral journey, he enriched the minds of many in the Smyrna community, ordained various pastors, evangelists, and deacons across the East Coast, and he faithfully served the Lord and ministered for 30-plus years to the people of Mount Zion First Baptist. And whereas Reverend John Calvin Hurst's greatest passion, aside from his family preaching the gospel and being a gracious community servant, was his love for deep-sea fishing. He would often quote, "When I retire, all I want to do is fish and preach." And whereas Reverend John Calvin Hurst worked tirelessly and sought God's guidance in all that he did. He served as a spiritual leader in the church and in the community, engaging with businesses, government, and community leaders as a member of the Cobb County Ministerial Alliance, Kennesaw Baptist Association, Kennesaw Baptist Training Union, Cobb NAACP, Smyrna United Task Force, as well as Hands, Feet, and Mouth Community Organization, to work for the greater good of everyone to be successful. Now, therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim December 2nd, 2019, a day of recognition and honor for Reverend John Calvin Hurst for his accomplishments and service in the community and ministry at Mount Zion First Baptist Church, Smyrna, Georgia. Ms. Hurst, would you please come forward?
Mayor Bacon? Yes, ma'am.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, and I see y'all have got a bunch of family out there.
That's just a portion of.
(laughing). Y'all want to, all the family members and folks that are here for the recognition of John Hurst, please stand, and I think it'd be appropriate if we got a picture of all of y'all some way. Y'all come on up. Nothing's gonna happen, I don't think.[486.25][486.25](laughter). John had been a member of our community for a number of years, as Marilyn mentioned, and he was a good man. He was always good to come and give the invocation here. He was never shy about asking for help from the city, and we were always trying to help him do it. And I see that's his son behind me. It's a spitting image of John, so thank you for everything that John did for our community, and he will be remembered forever, so thank y'all so much.
Thank y'all.
Scott, can you get a picture of all of them?
You could all, just spread out here and turn and face me. I'll get a photo of the city background there.
We're sorry about it being so cold outside. We asked for a little warmer weather, but...[564.04][564.04](laughter).[565.04][565.04](laughter).[566.04][566.04](laughter).[567.04][567.04](laughter).[568.04][568.04](laughter).[569.04][569.04](laughter).[570.04][570.04](laughter).[571.04][571.04](laughter).[572.04][572.04](laughter).[573.04][573.04](laughter).[574.04][574.04](laughter).[575.04][575.04](laughter).[576.04][576.04](laughter).[577.04][577.04](laughter).[578.04][578.04](laughter).[579.04][579.04](laughter).[580.04][580.04](laughter).[581.04][581.04](laughter).[582.04][582.04](laughter).[583.04][583.04](laughter). I'm gonna tell you, that's a good-looking group from this side. I mean, not the backside, but from our screen here. Anybody want to say, Ms. Hurst, you want to say anything else for any member of your family?
I would say to you, Mayor Bacon, it's been a joy of living here in Smyrna over 50-some years. And we have met great councilman, mayor, well, who used to be mayor when we moved here.[617.79][617.79](laughing). And, well, his daddy, but it has been a joy. And every time we ask for something, we come to the council meeting, and we get it. It may not be the same day, but we always get what we need. And I thank y'all for helping Rose Garden, because that's where we live, hiding in Rose Garden.
I know my mother and daddy were both very fond of Reverend Hurst, and he's just a good man.
Yes, he was.
Just a good man.
Yes, he was.
Yep. Thank y'all so much for coming.
Thank y'all for accepting us.
Thank y'all. Item B, 2019-428, Campbell High School Educational Foundation Report. Tim Goo, I think we got some educators back there. I could tell a little bit that they were back there. Tim, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's really a nice pleasure for me to introduce some of the folks from the Campbell High School Education Foundation. And with us tonight, we have a few people that like to make a presentation to the mayor and council, and particularly to the mayor. And with us tonight, we have Susan Carter, Kathy Riggins, Dr. Jean Walker, of course, Glenn Jardine, and Jim Delmer, all members of the foundation. And real quick, and for the folks that don't know, a couple of the goals of the foundation really is to raise funds for educational programs, teacher mini-grants, the career placement resource, and building an endowment for the school. A lot of these folks have been on the foundation for a long time, and put years in and have been involved with the high school in different forms. So with that, I will kick it over to Susan.
Thank you, Tim. Mayor Bacon. I'm Susan Carter, current president of the Campbell Educational Foundation, and you have been a part of its inception and a former board member, so we have a few tokens of appreciation to thank you for everything you've done, not just for the foundation, but for the Campbell High School community as a whole. As Tim said, we provide supplemental funds for education at Campbell High School. We also fund since 2018 the Susan Pearson Scholarship in honor of Susan Pearson, who was a wonderful, active part of our community and a former president of the Campbell High School Education Foundation. So, Max, since you have served as a board member before on our foundation, and you've also been instrumental in supporting our golf tournament every year, which is our major source of income, and also the John Col Jog, we wanted to give you a parting gift before you left office, but we thought that one thing just wasn't enough, so we have two. And Glenn, Jardine?
Yeah, Max, we just really appreciate your support. I've run the golf tournament for the last eight years, and I can say two-thirds of the funds we've raised has been because of you and your relationships and your help, so we deeply appreciate it.
Call on twisting.
You're really good at it. You're really good at it, so we really appreciate that. And we know your office and your house is full of trophies and plaques and things like that, so we searched high and low to find something that would really be special, and we came up with a Max Bacon bobblehead. It's the only kind, only one of its kind. And I will tell you, there was a couple of boxes I had to check, and unfortunately, I checked the one where you had to select body type, 25-year-old male adult athlete. So, it's a very slim version of Max, but it's in the, everybody remembers Fonzie, right? The two thumbs up? Hey! Every time I came to Max, I need some help. He's like, "Hey, no problem, no problem." So we have a small token here, Max.
Like Donald Trump.
It's very, it's very like...[855.23][855.23](laughter).[856.23][856.23](laughter).
Hey, that looks just like...
Let's take that out. We gotta take it out.
It's got not enough hair, but...
That was from a picture three weeks ago, Nelson.
Was it?
Yep.[874.62][874.62](laughter).
And we have one more gift.
So Mayor Bacon, one more, we feel highly appropriate presentation is a 3D-printed Spartan, Campbell Blue Spartan head, in appreciation and recognition of the many projects you've helped raise money to fund. One was the first 3D printer ever purchased at Campbell High School, so we made this...
I'm gonna come down there, and we get a picture. This does look like...
That's what you used to look like. I remember that.[909.12][909.12](laughter). Played softball together a few years ago.
He's gonna put some Just for Men's on the hair there.
You had more of a Fu Manchu a couple of weeks ago, Nelson.
Well, yeah, I did. I'm trying to, well, it's not even. I love this.
It's a little bit heavier.
Yeah. Get a pic, where's Scott at? Get the bobblehead in here, too. I gotta hold that.
You won't throw that away, will you?
No, I like that. Don't drop him now.
I know, that would be awful.
Look this way. One, two.
Thank y'all so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
You feel like a brave now, don't you?
Yeah.
Baseball player.
That does look a little bit like it.
I like it.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll just say this, out of the, being mayor, and one of the, I guess, fortunate things, I consider myself one of the luckiest people anywhere, to grow up here, born and raised here, attended Campbell High School, to be mayor of my hometown, to work for the postal service and retired postmaster, which happened in 2006. It's just been like a, I don't know, I couldn't have asked for anything else. Somebody asked me the other day, did I ever think about running for any other office? I told them no, that I had the best job in the world, as far as being an elected official, being the mayor of my hometown. I've always said this about the schools, and I've been a big supporter of the elementary schools and the middle schools, and particularly Campbell High School, that the schools drive our community, and we have the best schools anywhere. And I tell people all the time that if you, there's good private schools around here, but if you send your child to private school first, I think you're making a mistake. At least give our public schools, because you're gonna pay that tax, or you're gonna pay taxes for them, give our public schools a chance. And we have the best high school. Dr. Walker's done a great job. I'm not fading completely out. I'll still be around. They gave me a letter jacket that had the Baconator on the back of it, and so I'll, I should have worn that tonight if I didn't know y'all were gonna do this, but thank y'all so much, and I'll continue to support the, support those programs and continue to help raise money, not only at the golf tournament, but also the John Col City Jog. I may have more influence, being out of office than I did while I was in office, but thank y'all so much. This is a treat. Thank y'all. Item four is land issues only, it's an annexation. We don't have anything. Item five is privileged license. We have nothing, yes, we do. We got A, license 2019-21, public hearing privileged license request, 2019-21. Brewery, 206255 Riverview Road, Suite A, Mableton, Georgia, 30126. Reformation Brewery LLC doing business as Reformation Brewery with Brian Spencer Nix as the agent. Is he here? Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Brian Spencer Nix will be the registered agent responsible for the manufacturing and tasting of malt beverages at the reference location. Brian Nix has been given a copy of the city's alcohol beverage ordinance, and he attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. Mr. Nix has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the city of Smyrna's ordinance governing the manufacturing and selling of alcohol. A background investigation was conducted by the Smyrna Police Department, and it failed to reveal information that would preclude issuance of this license. Therefore, staff recommends approval of a privileged license for the manufacturing and tasting of malt beverages for Reformation Brewery LLC, DBA Reformation Brewery, with Brian Spencer Nix as the registered agent.
Okay. If the applicant was pleased, step forward. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this previous license request? Let the record show there is none. This is in Mr. Louis Wheaton's district. Mr. Wheaton.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Definitely good to chat with you and get to meet with you here. So, I heard from the introduction there that you've heard you have a copy of the ordinances related to alcoholic beverage sales in the city, so you're...
Louis, I'm sorry. It's my bad. Scott needs to swear these guys in.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Now, I'm sorry.
So now you can tell the truth.[1265.01][1265.01](laughter).
Yes, sir.[1267.01][1267.01](laughter).
All right, so just to rehash that last point, you've gotten the copy of the ordinances, you've read about it, you've read it, you're willing to abide by it and all that good stuff, and you completed the alcoholic beverage sales and service class.
Yes, sir.
Yep, very good, very good. So you're in an interesting location, given that you got a lot of apartments and all that stuff around you, a lot of residential there. You have methods in place, and what are those methods to restrict alcohol sales to the appropriate demographic?
Yes, yes, we do. And really, we are so excited to be in that community. Working with Chuck Young and that whole Riverview landing has been a privilege, really a great asset to this community, if I can do say so myself. And we really started as a community brewery. We got into this. I'm actually a former minister, and we were gathering people together around us, home brewing, and this community started to grow, and that's how we got into this. Six years later, it has grown, and this opportunity in this kind of community to be on the river, to celebrate, you know, the reasons around why we drink beer, that's why we exist as a brand, and to bring that into this community, and it's something we're excited about and privileged to be a part of.
Right, right. And so you understand that the police, from time to time, may conduct undercover checks and inquiries...
Absolutely.
...at your business to make sure you're in compliance with everything?
Welcome anytime.
All right, very good, very good. Does anyone else have any questions?
Tammy, again, who's the...
This is our council.
How are you doing?
You're paying him by the hour, so you gotta get him to release that stuff.
That's right, that's right. Terry Bailey, TPH Legal, and just for the record, I took this out a few months, gotta remember the address, but it's 1800 Peachtree Road Northeast, Suite 1515, Atlanta, Georgia 30326.
Do you know what I like about you? You're the only attorney that we have ever sworn in. Because Scott said that I had to be sworn in. Is that right?[1397.21][1397.21](laughter). Scott?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just sort of, I'm just intrigued about, you said that you were in the ministry?
I was, I was, for 10 years. Planned a church in Canton, Georgia, and went great, and we were looking for ways to be out in the community, and the other guy who founded the brewery with me, Nick, he's a Delta pilot, and he was bringing home these beers. We got into it, started home brewing, inviting people out, and Lord knows, a lot of people, we had a lot more friends than we realized. And a lot of those, a lot of those friends of ours came out of their closet and joined us, and the rest is history.
You can get them out of the closet. You're halfway there, so...
Yeah, exactly. It was, it's been, it's been a great journey.
I think we're excited about your business and what it's gonna bring to that part of the...
We're excited to be part of Smyrna. This is where my mom was born, so a lot of that's a full circle. Yep.
So your mom's name was...
She was a Louis. You may have, Bob Louis, and her older sister was Waverly Louis. She, they would have gone through elementary school here in Smyrna.
Yeah. Good deal.
When do y'all anticipate opening?
Yeah, well, after we get through this process, the next is the state licensing. They don't tell you how long that'll take, but hopefully a few weeks. So after that's done, the building's looking great. We're really, really close to being complete with the building, just all the licensing at this point.
Good deal.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I do have another question.
Yes.
Do you also have another location in...
Yes, in Cherokee County. We have a location in downtown Woodstock and the city of Canton.
Okay.
Yep. On the Etowah River in the city of Canton.
So I think I saw something last night on TV, a doc, I don't know if it's a documentary, it was about the 420?
Yeah.
About how much they have expanded?
Oh, yeah, they're nationwide.
Yep.
Just to give perspective, we're much, much smaller than Sweetwater.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much for opening up down there. It's gonna be another great part of the city for us to expand.
Really excited, really excited.
Y'all are far enough away from City High, we probably won't even bother you.[1526.33][1526.33](laughter). Good location.
Well, you're welcome anytime. And congratulations, Mayor, on your service.
Any other questions? Lewis?
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve privileged license request, 2019-21. Brewery, 6255 Riverview Road, Suite A, Mableton, Georgia, 30126. Reformation Brewery LLC doing business as Reformation Brewery with Brian Spencer Nix as agent.
Back up.
Motion is second. Should need to have the discussion. Although some favorable motion. Thank y'all very much. Good luck.
Thank y'all. Have a great night.
Good job, council. Item six is formal business. A is resolution 2019-06, adopt resolution abandoning a portion of Sports Avenue consisting of 0.479 acres, because it is no longer needed and authorizing the city to convey whatever interest it has in the property to the adjacent property owner, Lanar Homes, in exchange for Lanar Homes conveying a strip of property to the city that has an equal or greater value. Is the applicant here? Mr. Sam, the background, Ms. Jones.
The language in this resolution concludes that the section of Sports Avenue, consisting of 0.479 acres, has ceased to be used by the public, that no substantial public purpose is served by it, and that its removal from the municipal street system is in the best interests of the public. The approved site plan reflected the abandonment of the Sports Avenue right-of-way in exchange for new right-of-way along the northern property boundary, which is in line with the roadway improvements recommended in the Spring Road Livable Cities Initiative Study. Staff recommends abandoning the property and authorize the mayor to convey it to Lanier, Georgia Incorporated, or its affiliate, in exchange for Lanier, Georgia Incorporated, or its affiliate conveying the property depicted in Exhibit B and described in Exhibit B1 to the city of Smyrna. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the abandonment of the portion of right-of-way consisting of 0.479 acres at the end of Sports Avenue that is no longer needed, and convey whatever interest to the city, the city has in the property, to the adjacent property owner, Lanar Homes. I think I misspoke and said Lanier, Lanar Homes, pardon me.
All right, Mr. Sams, step forward. This is in Mr. Norton's district, Mr. Norton.
Turn it over to Ms. Sams, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, my name is Garvis Sams, of the law firm Sams, Larkin &amp; Huff, and I do represent Lanar, and you got that right, Ms. Adler Jones. In connection with a rezoning of a 12.4-acre tract last summer, you agreed or approved a downzoning of this property from GC to RM12 for the purposes of 108 townhomes. As a part of that, there were stipulations and conditions governing the zoning, but the land exchange, that is, our dedication to the city and the city's abandonment of certain right-of-way, is a separate and distinct process, even though we spoke about it during the pendency of that zoning. There are statutory requirements regarding abandonment and dedication, and so we've complied with those, and the city attorney's been kind enough, along with your community development director, to make this an agenda item tonight. I can talk all night long, you know me, but I'll be as brief as previous council, and just say we ask that you follow your staff's recommendation, but my engineer, Mr. Richard Sanger, and I are here and can speak to any issues you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions to Mr. Sams? Any questions to Mr. Sams? Rusty, anything you want to add? Thank you, Mr. Sams.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so thorough and brief.
Appreciate it.
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve Item 6A, Resolution 2019-06, adopting a resolution abandoning a portion of Sports Avenue consisting of 0.479 acres because it's no longer needed and authorizing the city to convey whatever interest it has in the property to the adjacent property owner, Lennar Homes.
A motion to second to approve this abandonment and convey the property to the city of Smyrna of equal or greater value. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 7-0. Good job, Mr. Sams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On a personal note, I want to say it's been a pleasure over the past four decades, serving this community and appearing before you, Mr. Mayor, and this council is presently constituted. I know some of you will be rotating on or off, and congratulations, Mr. Wheaton, to you being on board, but it's been a pleasure at all times working with you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Garvis.
Thank you so much.
I know our parents, our fathers were good friends.
Yeah, we were. Your dad was, I think, still mayor when I came in. You and I were honorary commanders together, and that's a story for another time.
I say, I got a picture of you in a tank.
Yeah, I'm afraid you do.
We went on an honorary commander's trip, and Garvis and I, we were in his tank together at Fort Campbell, Kentucky, I think, maybe, somewhere, but he had a little hat, and he really looked cute. I'm gonna try to find that picture.
Found it once and put it up there. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Garvis. All right, I'm gonna go stand by. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 8 is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of November 18th, 2019, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the November 18th, 2019, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the November 14th, 2019, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval to renew management services agreement for Smyrna Food Truck Tuesday with JRM Management Services Incorporated for a $0 impact, and have the mayor sign and execute all related documents. Item E, approval of The Secrets of Smyrna, an entertaining historical street theater tour of Smyrna's most interesting places and the stories of some of Smyrna's citizens of yesteryear, hosted by the Smyrna Arts Council and scripted and performed by Atlanta Theater To Go, a professional theater company and nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. The Secrets of Smyrna is proposed to take place on Saturday, November 17th, and Sunday, November 18th, 2020, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m., consisting of four 45-minute walking tours of various downtown locations and one street closure, one street closure, pardon me, memorial place between Church Street and Atlanta Road adjacent to the Smyrna Cemetery.
You hear motion to approve the consent agenda. A motion to second. All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 7-0. Item 9 is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, I know that this is our Assistant City Administrator, Scott Andrews', last meeting, and just want to say it's been a pleasure working with you and best of luck on your future endeavors. And just want to remind everybody, there is an election tomorrow, and I hope that everybody will exercise their right to vote. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
I wanted to tell Scott Andrews that we're gonna miss you. I don't know why, but we will miss you. I don't know that the people in Covington know what they're getting, but we hope, we wish you the very best, and thank you for the time that you've spent with us. And since we just started our holiday season, I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving, and I'm sure that with Christmas and New Years and all, we'll have some more happy occasions with our friends and families. Thank you.
Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. No committee report. Just want to say, Scott Andrews, thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I'm sure that you're gonna have a great time on your new journey, so we wish you all the best. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna mirror what everybody said about Scott with a little more. I want to say something about him. Scott has never been afraid to take on a hard task and deal with it. Oftentimes, I've asked him, Scott, I'd be more than willing to be the bad guy in this thing, and Scott's always told me, no, I've got it taken care of. So with that, I wish you well. Scott will certainly be missed, and he'll do a great job wherever he goes. Other than that, I'd want to remind everybody to come out tomorrow night for Smyrna Coming Home for Christmas. Come out for the tree lighting. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
I just want to make sure my microphone is on. I don't believe it is, so I want to also say, Scott, it's been a pleasure working with you, and good luck on your new career or your new job. And also, I would like to make an announcement about, for Mary Moore from the library. The Friends of the Smyrna Library and the Dixie Lego Users Group will hold their third annual Books and Bricks Lego Exhibit and Fundraiser. The elaborate exhibit of Lego constructions includes landscapes, cityscapes, and moving parts like trains and ski lifts. The exhibit will be in the Smyrna Library Meeting Room on Saturday, December the 7th, and Sunday, December the 8th. Tickets will be sold at the door for $3 per person, and the proceeds will benefit the Youth Services Department of the Smyrna Library. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Tim Gu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick things. First, on the educational side, Campbell IB just released some graduate acceptance numbers, and there's about 120 kids in the senior IB class, and out of that, 75 students were accepted to the University of Georgia. So if anybody kind of pays attention to those things, that's really a remarkable number for, probably for the whole school, but much less out of a group of about 120 kids. It's really, credit to Dr. Walker and Dan Pennick and the folks over there, teachers and all that over at Campbell. So as the mayor said, we really do have great schools here, and that's one piece of evidence of it, so. Secondly, just to reiterate, please get out and vote tomorrow. It's a big day for the city, and then after you vote, come out to the tree lighting and celebrate that. It's a great, a lot of fun. And then, of course, congratulations, Scott. Best of luck to you. It's your pleasure, a pleasure to work with, and I'm sure you'll do, make, do great things in Covington, and then come back.
Mr. Louis Wheaton.
Yeah, a couple of things. Also reiterating my congratulations to Scott, outstanding. Haven't got to work with you too long, but you've always been a smiling face and always helpful and willing to answer a question, even a dumb one from me, so thank you so much for that. A couple of people have mentioned the tree lighting. Want to echo, definitely after you vote tomorrow, come on out and check out the tree lighting tomorrow. And also on your calendars, make sure you're aware, on December 23rd at 6, we have the second, I believe, menorah lighting for the city, so make sure you put that on your calendar as well, to come out for that. And lastly, for those, I want to encourage all the residents to participate in the Smyrna Connects Transit Study Survey. Definitely take a look at that survey. It's smyrnicanex.com, I believe. You have until December 15th to complete that survey, so get your opinion heard. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Ms. Jones, do you have anything else?
Just want to say congratulations to Scott. It's been a pleasure working with you the last two years. Scott was appointed the city manager for the city of Covington, Georgia, so I wish him well, and of course, if you ever have any questions, you're more than welcome to reach out to me.
You shouldn't have said that. He'll be calling about everything. What do I do now? Scott Andrews?
Mike, there we go. I wasn't gonna say anything because it's already a time of transition, but I really want to thank you, council members, for trusting me and for allowing me to make mistakes and grow. Tammy, you've given me a total opportunity and platform to, you treat me like a peer, and I hope I have done more good than bad for you, and just really compliment the team. There's not many of them in the audience here, but the team here is just outstanding, and I've truly enjoyed my time in Smyrna. Thank you, everyone.
Scott Cochran, our city attorney.
Hello. All right, yeah, I'll echo what everybody said about Scott. Wish you luck in Covington. I know you'll do well. And, you know, just take what you learned here and add to it, and like Tim said, come back soon.
Ms. Terry Graham.
Yes, sir. I'd like to congratulate Scott also and let you know that we're gonna miss you and wish you well in Covington. We also have an election. We have a runoff election for the seat of the mayor and also Ward 2. Ward 1 will vote in at Argyle Elementary School. Ward 2 will vote at Fire Station Number 3. Ward 3 will vote at the Smyrna Community Center. Ward 4 will vote at King Springs Elementary School. Now, that is the K1 campus on Brown Road. Smyrna Ward 5 will vote at Belmont Hills Elementary. Ward 6 will vote at Campbell Middle School, and Smyrna Ward 7 will vote at Life Church Smyrna Assembly of God. All those campuses will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. At the Smyrna Community Center, we will be hosting the Coming Home for the Holidays, but we will have 47 parking spaces reserved from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for voter parking. So please look for the officers to guide you into that area so that you can find parking and get into that, into the community center and vote. But please do come out and vote and exercise your vote, your right to vote. With that, I thank you.
Ms. Tina, you got anything? Before we get to folks that have signed up for citizen input, I just want to, Scott Andrews, thank you so much for giving Smyrna... How long has he been here?
Two years.
Change, yeah, yeah. I appreciate all that you've done. I appreciate the image that you put out there for the city of Smyrna. We're gonna miss you and wish you the best in Covington, is that what it's called? You'll do fine there. I told him earlier, he'd be, he'd be gone, he'd be back in about two weeks, but, you know, sometimes you just gotta let folks go, but thank you so much for all that you've done. You're a good man. Okay, we do not have a show cause hearing, citizens input. We've got three people that have signed up for that. Andrea Bluestein, 2407 Country Park, Smyrna, Georgia, Election Day, 12-3.
Good evening. I'm Andrea Bluestein, and I am the Ward 2 councilperson, and I'm running for the second time in two and a half months for the same office. I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow is December 3, and that is our second election day in the short period of time. We're voting for Ward 2 council, which is the, which in the earlier voting in November was a tie, which is evidently extremely unusual. Please vote, so that I don't have to go through this a third time. I'm anxious to get the results. Thank you for letting me be your Ward 2 representative, and I hope to continue. Thank you very much.
Ryan Campbell, 2004 White Cypress Court, Smyrna, Georgia, 30082, Election Day.
Good evening to everybody. Tomorrow's a big day for the city of Smyrna, and I just wanted to say thank you to the residents, to the council, to Mayor Max Bacon, for making such a wonderful journey, not just during the election process, but over the past four years. And we're going into a state of transition that's really, really important, and we've tried to run a positive campaign that reflects the journey of the city, but hones in on where it's going in the journey that we have left. And I think it's really, really critical that voters really show up and vote for whoever they think is the best candidate. My age has been brought up a lot in this campaign. I tend to be the youngest at whatever I do, and I take pride in that, and it's been an amazing journey because of that. And with that said, I really appreciate the time and the energy that everybody has put in on both sides to make sure that our city continues to head in the right direction, and I would ask all voters to get out and vote tomorrow. Thank y'all so much.
M. Blackburn, Huntington Trace Rives, Smyrna, election.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, council. Well, we've been talking about election, and tomorrow is a very important day, but before we head to tomorrow, I want to take this time and say thank you to Max, A-Max Bacon, for the 34 years plus that you've given to the city, and that, I'm sure, has been an incredible journey, and we appreciate that. But I also want to say that tomorrow's another important day because it actually begins to mark how we shape Smyrna's future. We have to look at the 21st century vision here now. Smyrna is at a crossroads, and this is an election about building, not building upon the past, but rather, an election about our future, a future that will propel us to thrive in a dynamic 21st century economy, where inclusive government works for all Smyrna residents, where education meets the needs of our community, where environmental stewardship has a plan to protect our air, water, and soil in the individuals living in the city, where diversity is not a word to be taken lightly or need help in understanding, but utilized to carefully maneuver our city forward. Whomever our next mayor is, they must be careful and thoughtful in the process when positioning our city for economic growth that will be in the best interest of the city, not self. Lisa Hasha made a statement that said, "Great leaders don't set out to be a leader. They set out to make a difference. It is never about the role, always about the goal," and that's the kind of leader that Smyrna needs. So I ask all of the constituents of Smyrna to please exercise your right to vote tomorrow on December the 3, and choose someone who is going to lead us into the 21st century. Thank you.
That concludes the folks that have signed up for citizens input. I would just encourage everybody to go vote tomorrow. It's one of the greatest privileges that we have. Please, even if it's a little chilly, please get out there and vote. And with that, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at 7:47. All right, let's see. Oh, you can get, you can get the...